We'll call the meeting to order for the day. First item is approval of today's agenda.
So who?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the agenda, all in favor, signed by Saint Aye. Both same sign, motion carries. Citizens to be heard, I seen none. We'll move on to approval and payment of bills and vouchers.
Move approval, second.
Motion second to pay the bills and vouchers, all in favor, signed by Saint Aye. Both same sign, motion carries. Approval of minutes from the February 12th and 19th, 2019 meetings.
Move approval, second.
Motion second to approve minutes from February 12th and the 19th. All those in favor, Saint Aye. Both same sign, motion carries. Okay, request approval of contract for legal services for the city of Holly. Pam, morning.
Good morning. So this morning I have, for your consideration, a contract to provide prosecution services for the city of Holly. About a month ago, I was asked by county members in the city of Holly to meet with them regarding prosecution services for the city of Holly. We met with the mayor, Steve Larson was there, and a couple of council members. I did prepare a proposed agreement for the city of Holly, and it would be a two-year agreement, starting April 1st of 2019, running through March 31st of 2021. It's a flat fee for services, for the first year of $12,000, the second year would be $13,000. It's my understanding that the city of Holly, last week in their council meeting, approved that agreement and are asking that we provide services for them. So I do have that agreement. It would require the signature of myself, Mr. Wayland, and then I think Mr. Larson as well.
Questions for Pam?
I just appreciate your office's flexibility. I know that our conversation is, we want to make sure that we're providing, you know, the best service to those smaller cities, and if it works out through an arrangement like this, we're happy to do so. So, you know, I think the customer service piece is the piece that we're wanting to make sure that they don't get dropped in the interim. So I thank you for being flexible with that.
I agree. Thank you for making this work for the smaller towns that are interested. Kevin?
Well, I want to make comment, you know, I think this is kind of was our goal all along, was to, you know, provide a good service to all of our communities within the county, but we wanted to deal with being reimbursed for our costs. And so I'm assuming that the cost that you've come up with over the next two years, even though it's a fixed cost, they portray a good example of what the cost of those services are.
Yep.
So, and that's all we've asked in this deal, and I want to thank your county attorney's office for being willing to do that.
Frank?
Are you working with any other cities that are involved in this deal? Was it Hall, I mean, excuse me, Glendon, Dilworth, was it Barnesville too, or?
If this is only Holly, is my understanding at this point.
So none of the other cities that wanted to go?
We've had conversations with Glendon. I think they may be addressing that at their city council meeting tonight, but I haven't heard back from Glendon. So right now, this is only with Holly.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, the motion.
Motion second to approve, any further discussion?
So Pam, when we restructured your budget, we did not include any funds from outside agencies.
Correct.
Nor did we include manpower.
Correct.
So 12,000, it doesn't sound like it's an awful lot of work. So is that, I'm assuming that's something that you can work through based on that? I think we had a little extra, didn't we?
Well, I think there was a little bit extra, but we did hire.
Ms. Davies?
Yep, an interim, so it will take some of that, but you know, I think Commissioner Campbell's right, we want to make sure that if it is requiring some additional time, that we use whatever revenues are coming in to subsidize the manpower.
My, certainly my goal too, is to not put your staff in a position where they just feel overwhelmed. And if, so we need to be, you know, cautious of that, so.
Yeah.
And I don't think this little contract will do that, but.
No, and when we ran the numbers, I think it's something, we're obviously, we're going to absorb it into already the staff that we have. And I think, given the numbers, it's, and the time that we'll have to put in from an county employee, I think that's where we reach this number. Given that we can spread that out among all the attorneys down there, hopefully, it's not going to be too much of a stressor on them. We're almost, we're getting close to full staff now.
Are we reaching out to the cities, or are we waiting for them to contact us, or how does it work with Holly? I mean, did they reach out to us, or do we go to?
That, all I know is that Steve Larson contacted me and said that he had conversations with the city of Holly. I don't know if he reached out to them, or if they reached out to him, or how that worked.
I think Holly did reach out to the county for that service, and I think Glendon did too.
Well, I, you know, I think this all started at our last small cities meeting. We had this discussion about the potential, and, you know, so I think back then, we had talked to them and said if they elected to stay with us, that we would try to make that work. So that's, I think that went back to a meeting, I can't remember the date of the small cities meeting.
It was September.
Yeah, probably in September or so.
So where are we, excuse me, so where are we at, then if, say, two of them are, how many are left there? If they reach out to us, do we have the facilities or the manpower to do it, or we just say no to them, or, I mean, where are we at with that?
It would depend on which cities.
Okay.
Glendon, we could possibly take them on as well without adding staff. I think if we did, we might have to add a legal assistant.
Okay.
But if, like Dilworth reached out, we would have to add staff for that, I mean, they're too large, their cases.
And I don't think we've had any indication of that at this point, so.
No, and I, I think, you know, Commissioner Wayland and I wanted to make sure that, because the contract was, you know, Morehead's contract, basically, with the small cities, but when that dissolved, we wanted to make sure that we addressed what their needs would be, if they had an option or not, and as Commissioner Wayland and I have said, we wanted to address it sooner rather than later, for both parties' best interest. But I, I think that there has been contact to all of the small cities in the last six weeks, for sure.
Well, I was just concerned, are they going to be without services, or?
Well, yeah, they'll, my guess is they'll either join with us or join with the city of Morehead, so they're going to have their service. Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? We have a motion, all in favor of the motion, signed by Saint Aye. Both same sign, motion carries. Thanks Pam.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, request approval of memorandum of understanding between the sheriff's office and the U.S. Marshal Service. Sheriff emptying.
Morning.
Morning.
Thanks for having me this morning. What you have in front of you is a memorandum of understanding that we'd like to have the approval to sign. This is with the U.S. Marshal Service to have a deputy work on the Violent Offender Crimes Task Force. We're not requesting any type of additional personnel or funds for this. This would be something that we already have a deputy currently working. It would provide him a little bit more latitude with investigations and jurisdictional-type issues. I think it would be a big benefit to our community, as this is something that we would be able to possibly get reimbursed for overtime for, along with the vehicle and things like that. So there is a benefit to not only us, but the community as well, as far as he's out there looking for the bad people on the street.
Questions for the sheriff?
I just have a question, and maybe it's a simple answer, I just am not aware. So when you're working with the U.S. Marshals, are you covered under the U.S. Marshals' umbrella for liability coverage, and then when you're doing county work, are you?
Correct, yep. He would be deputized as a U.S. Marshal. Currently, the Morehead Police Department does have an officer that's working under the same task force as well, and we would just be following the same suit. I think it's a huge benefit for the county.
Thank you.
I didn't understand you at the beginning, did you say we're already under this and we're just extending it, or is this a new?
He's, he's working with the U.S. Marshals already, with the Street Crimes Task Force. It's our Street Crimes Deputy, they also have, the U.S. Marshals also have somebody assigned to it, so they are working kind of hand in hand together. This just allows our deputy a little bit more latitude when it comes to investigations and things like that, if that U.S. Marshal is not with him at the time.
Yeah, it's a good idea to formalize the agreement. Any other questions for the sheriff?
Is that to facilitate him making an arrest under a federal warrant, if necessary?
Well, he could do it under a federal warrant already, but it also assists him investigations on the North Dakota side of the river, but also on this side of the river, where the federal government, the marshals, they are, they have a little bit more latitude when it comes to warrants, as far as entry into houses if needed.
And there's always the possibility to extend to another state besides the Dakota where it covers them, so.
It does, and if they're looking for somebody that has a warrant here out of the Clay County area, that person could be in St. Cloud, for example, and it allows him to be able to go to St. Cloud and effect that arrest.
Does that include a new car too, then, or?
I'll make a motion to approve. Yeah, maybe, it's potential.
I'll make a motion to approve, second.
Motion in a second to approve the sheriff's request, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, signed by Saint Aye. Both same sign, motion carries. There we go, sheriff, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, annual department update, Regional Juvenile Center, James. Morning, James.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, morning.
Good morning, James.
I guess I'm here to do my annual update, or keep it as new as possible. Feel free to ask questions, though. There's two major programs in the juvenile center, we have a secure program and a non-secure program. Our secure program has two main services inside that. It's a secure residential program, it's a treatment program, it's a little bit longer term, and then we do, we do our treatment, oh, pre-adjudicated detention services as well. Looking at just some raw data, we had 561 intakes into our secure program last year, for a total of 10,476 bed days used. 23.3% of the youth stayed under 48 hours, that means they were released at their detention hearing. 24% of our intakes were females, that's in line with national average, and 15.4 of the bed days used were females as well, and that's in line with national average. Reasons for placement, I just broke it up into four categories. For simplifying purposes, I did violent crimes, crimes against a person, so that's your assaults, your crime sex, your robberies, that's 30.7% of our intakes. Property crime, burglary, which would include burglary if somebody's in the house, two motor vehicle theft, significant criminal damage to property, 22%, drug-related crimes are 11%, and just other crimes that it broke into, weapons obstruction, terrorizing, about another third of the intake population. Historically.
And these are kids.
These are kids.
Yeah, historical, historical usage of the program, it started in 2015, that's when Cass County came on. As you can see, total bed days, just seems to be a little steady incline coming in. Again, this is for 11 counties that we're part of. I broke it out to the side of the Clay County usage, and as you can see, with the collaborative that we have, it's, it's good because it stabilizes things. If you look at Clay County's bed days used, they fluctuate, I mean, 2016, you're looking at over 4,000 bed days used, 2016, you're looking at 2,145 bed days used, 2018, sorry. So it cuts in half, but you know, you can go the other way, it's just as quick. Otter Tail County is trending, trending upward, so with Clay County's responsibility for paying, this is good news for Clay County in that sense, because it goes to a two-year lookback of the percentage used, so Clay County's numbers are dropping, their usage is dropping, so Clay County's responsibility for the secure program will be dropping as well. Anybody got questions on that?
I think I may have asked this in the past, but do we track with these individuals if they have family members that are using our correctional facility, for instance?
Um, no, not, not 100%, but I, I'm really interested in stuff like that, too. Our youth, well, I can just go right into that portion of it, it kind of balances out. On the back portion, I put program evaluation. A lot of times, people look at programs, juvenile programs, and they do it in terms of recidivism rate as being effective.
Yep.
The problem with juvenile programming is, a lot of times, you're comparing apples and oranges. So you can have a community-based program, which is a good program, they're great programs, however, those youth are different than the youth we get. The youth we get are the ones that have already been unsuccessful in that community-based program. So to say that the community-based program has a recidivism rate of 10%, and we have a recidivism rate of 50%, we got to look at that in terms of, we're able to help 50% of the people that they weren't. So that's, that's really, so when you look at the scientific research and stuff, correctional best practices, when you break it down, there's two different risk factors of committing crime. You have your static and your dynamic risk factors. Your static risk factors are things that we can't control, that's your parents, your biological parents who raised you, that sort of stuff, we can't control that. But the dynamic risk factors, we can control, and that's what we work on with our programming. So with the best research out there has it, that the best programs work on antisocial attitudes, values, beliefs, and cognitive emotional states. So that's what we do, we run a cognitive behavioral program in our secure detention program. We evaluate the effectiveness of that program using a criminal thinking scale. It's been empirical research and proven to be both valid and reliable as a measure of criminal thinking in juveniles. So we, we give this to our youth, we test our youth intake and release of our secure detention treatment program. As you can see, criminal thinking drops. So it's showing that we're successful in what we're doing, because that's what we're trying to do, is we're trying to reduce risk factors. That's all we're trying to do, is reduce risk factors. So that's just one of the areas that we're really working on, and it's been very effective, and we're getting a lot of attention around the state for that. So that's, that's pretty good news, I think. It's something we're pretty proud of. We're, we're also pushing that sort of thing into our non-secure program, too. We're working with a lot more youth from around the areas that social services really want us to start working with some of these youth that would be, for our non-secure program, that's very high risk, that they would be sending out elsewhere. So we're working closely with social services to keep those kids on county, on campus, in the community, with the resources that they have in our non-secure program, but keeping them safe with the structure of the juvenile center. So we're working really hard with them, and that's where our non-secure program's going to shift. So when the expansion does come through, we'll have that space and that program material to, to help social services with those types of youth that might not be on the correctional side of things, or the delinquency side of things, they're, they've just got severe mental health issues and behavioral issues. Going into non-securities data, again, you look at non-securities data, I mean, the bed days used is pretty much flat from 2018 to 2019, that's because we're pretty much full all the time. When there's an opening, we'll take kids from other counties, but we tend to want to take care of Clay County first, because that's a Clay County program. So, again, there's.
Have you had a situation, James, where we've had to turn away our own Clay County kids?
Clay County, I think there's two Clay County turndowns in 2018, there's only two.
Because of being full?
We were maxed out, yep. So we, we worked really hard, we turned down, let's see, I think I put it in here. Yeah, we have 69 placement request turndowns, only two of them were Clay County turndowns.
So, you know, looking to the future, when the new facility is complete, we're going to be basically doubling our non-secure beds as well, right?
Yep.
So, so, you know, until we grow to the point where we end up having to have more for just Clay County, there is room for revenue to come in from being able to utilize other counties.
Most definitely. There's no other counties around the area have a facility like ours, the non-secure program, so they, they tend to struggle with social workers and whatnot, they're, they're looking all over the state.
I know, I know, over the years, being on that, on that board, I remember hearing several times from some folks from Otter Tail County, where, you know, can we, I wish we could use your non-secure.
Yep.
Yeah, it's one of those things, though, that, you know, like it is now, it's, unfortunately, we'll probably be utilizing all that space, most of it ourselves, too, and so controlling that to benefit Clay County, I think, is going to be important, so.
Frank?
What happens to these kids that are turned down, I mean, or that you say you don't have space for, where do they go with it?
They got to start looking elsewhere. Bemidji's been usually full this past year, we have a close relationship with them. Crookston, they, they will, they might have space, but otherwise, they got to start heading toward the cities, start looking for placements. So, yeah, it's, it's a real mess.
Costs the operation.
Yes, it is.
That's part of what I think Rhonda was, why she was able to even shift some dollars into this, into this process, you know, because there probably would be a few more of our kids that, because, and again, that goes probably more to the programming that you're now going to be offering.
Yep.
Which before, she had to send elsewhere, and now we'll be able to keep them right here, and that'll be very helpful.
Yeah, so just some noteworthy events, as of recently, started working with, I guess, for a Clay County piece, Georgia, it's been a hard time finding custodial things, and in 2020, when we started transitional services, we really want to pick up employability skills training. So what we've done is we've started working with Georgia with our secure residential youth, and we're, we're doing some janitorial services in the family service center, and we're using that as benefit to Clay County and, and community service, but also, it's a good programming for our staff, our staff talk to, you know, we have lessons on various different things about employability skills, and then we put those to work, and they show pride, et cetera, in the work that they're doing. So it's, it's, it's a nice piece for everyone, and it's nice that it's here on campus, that we have a spot on campus where we can take these youth that might not be, they might be a little bit more volatile in the, in the community, but since we're here on campus, we feel comfortable and we have space for them to, to work on some of those skills, so. So that's a, that's a big one that we're really looking at. Again, we're coordinating with M State and Lake's Country Service Cooperative, they're coming in, they're, they're helping us out big time with some transition stuff, and when that transition program opens up, they're really looking at education for some of these youth that would have their GED, that would be in our transitional programming, that, you know, maybe they could start taking some classes at M State. If they want to go that route, or if they want to start working, then, you know, SEP and Lake's County Services Cooperative will help out with that.
Well, it's good to hear that you're communicating with Lake's County.
Yeah, I know you're on there working, that's a, that Troy is very helpful with us in that area, he's very good in that program, so. Does anybody got any?
I think you have a question, Jim?
Yeah, I, can you highlight, again, the school piece? I noticed you didn't talk about that, and I think it's important for the public to know what the educational component that we have there.
Oh, sure, yeah, that's actually, that's our strongest relationship, is that we have Morehead Public Schools, and Morehead Public Schools is amazing. We do summer, we do summer school, so we do school all year round, but it's, everybody that comes into our program actually gets enrolled in Morehead Public Schools, so they never fall behind in school when they come to us. Actually, they can jump ahead. About a year and a half ago, Morehead Public Schools dumped some more resources into our facility as we got bigger, and we, we parallel a regular high school. We have teachers coming in that teach their strength, social studies, teacher teaches social studies, math, teacher teaches math and science, so I mean, and the kids rotate around, and then they do that, that piece, and that's, that's pretty big, so.
Well, and part of the reason why I wanted you to highlight that is, is I think often that if you hear criticism about, oh, this kid's just in juvie, right? But we are making a pointed effort to make sure that they're connected with resources that can make them successful in their life going far, you know, further, but to keep them connected in the resources and the community is really important, and I think the collaboration with Lake's Country Services, and Lakeland Mental Health, and the schools is really important to making sure we address some of those issues, so that maybe they're not in our correctional facility going forward. So thank, you know, it's unfortunate that we have to have a facility like that, but I'm thankful that we do have one in Clay County, and I think it really, really is beneficial, so thank you.
Yep, you guys do a great job there, James, and I think a special thanks going to you and your staff, going through this, you know, construction process. I know it's, it's tough for you guys to maneuver through all of that, and we really do appreciate it, but I think it'll be worthwhile when the project is done.
Yes, it'll be, it'll be nice, our kids will really appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I say, I know I speak for the board, we do appreciate everything you and your staff do with these kids, we know it's, it's a tough job, so.
We appreciate your support.
You had a couple employees assaulted a few weeks ago, is that, everything going okay with those employees?
Yeah, it's, it's going okay. We're working with HR with one of the employees when they're going to come back, and, yeah, it's unfortunate, but, you know, these youth are, are violent, and they, they're physically larger, some of them are bigger than myself, and they're physically fit, so it's, it's a dangerous job at times.
Any other questions for James?
Do you have?
Thank you, James, and then we've got one other thing I know on the agenda, that requests approval to accept a grant from Department of Education.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Motion there, I'm going to make a.
Yeah, but, you know, with, with that, you know, again, thank you for the effort to go out to find that.
Yeah, we looked through them every once in a while, and that one just seemed like a kind of easy deal, because it was already in the specs. So I mean, it wasn't a whole lot of grant writing that had to do for that, it was, it was already in the specs, so I just submitted that stuff.
Well, it was something that we had planned to have to have with our new facility, and you just helped pay for it, so.
Okay. Good job. Okay, we've got a motion in a second, any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Both same sign, motion carries. Thanks again, James.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I will cover this next one, as a member of the planning commission.
Okay, it's a request to, or.
Oh, sorry. I missed Ben, I apologize.
Come on up, Ben.
Sorry. So excited to have this member, excited to hear you, too, sorry.
Good morning, Ben.
Thanks for having me here today, good to see you all. We continue to appreciate your partnership with the university and extension, and we're very happy to be here in Morehead with our regional office, and of course, our county office as well. So our, our programming, our extension program here in the county continues to be strong and expansive. I'll start with our 4-H program here, run by Mitzi Marlin and Lisa Kasenbauer. So within our community clubs, which is, you know, our traditional 4-H, we, we have 11 of them across the, across the county, and that reaches about 425 youth. And then we have a lot of project clubs as well, that focus on certain aspects that youth have an interest in, and that reaches additional kids. And then our, Lisa focuses on our after-school programming, and she's really in, in pretty much every school across the county. So she did six weeks of STEM programming, science-related programming, in Ulan, Holly, Barnesville, Dilworth, and Glendon, and then here in Morehead as well. There's going to be some other additional programming, just focused on the schools here in Morehead, too, coming up with after-school, again, with some of that involving the, the science programming, which a lot of youth have a growing interest in, and is a, is a big need. We also have a, one of our, a new development with our 4-H. We also have a, one of our, a new development with our 4H program is we, through some state 4H funding, we've added a, a part-time employee in our office, Rosie McCoslin Thompson, and she's been specifically working with new Americans in, in the, in the county, in other minority groups. So, she's had a partnership with the New American Development Agency, and through that, they've had some after-school programming, they've created some customized programming with other organizations in the area as well, and it's really been giving those kids a good opportunity to understand what 4H is and give them some development programming as well. We also tie in county fair activities with them and state fair opportunities as well, so they see the, the full perspective of, of 4H and what it has to offer. So, all together, in our kind of other programming that we do through the summer and through community ed and project days, we reach an additional eight hundred fifty youth. And a lot of that programming is helped by all our volunteers that we have, so we have about a hundred twenty-five adult volunteers in 4H and then fifty youth volunteers as We, our 4H Federation is kind of the organization that manages the, the program on the volunteer side, and, and they're really active with giving grant funding to programs and projects as well in, in the area with their work. And then they also fund our interns that we have in the summer too, so that adds to our programming opportunities. Another thing I wanna highlight is, and this came about from the, kind of the department head retreat that you had last year. At that, I ended up talking with Rhonda Porter about how we can work together with our two departments with youth, and that resulted in Mitzi and Lisa meeting with some mental health case managers, and so they did a, a presentation on what 4H could offer and how they could partner together, and then that led, that again led to a STEM program at Lakeland Mental Health, and there were fourteen youth and six case managers that attended that, and they're gonna plan to meet again next month to, to keep that programming going and that discussion going. So, we're really happy with that. That's something we try to do, is to, is to integrate in with the other county departments and, and share the resources and help each other out. Randy Nelson in Horticulture and Agriculture, he continues to do well with his outreach, and that's a big part of his job is, is answering questions and that come into the office or through, through the phone with people's inquiries related to the topics that he works on. He's really also good at doing media outreach, so he's on a lot of the radio stations and the, the local news publications as well, and he's also great at partnering with NDSU, their Horticulture Educators, on, on sharing programming together that, that helps with, with our programming outreach. A big part too of his programming is with the Master Gardeners, and, and they're just a small group here in the county, but they, they still do great things, they're very passionate about their work. We've talked about before, all, all the construction projects here on the county campus, we're happy to help with some of the landscaping with that, and, and that was a, a big interest that those Master Gardeners had too. On the nutrition side of things, with Rosie Gonzalez, she continues to do programming in all the schools in the county, both elementary and high school, depending on their needs and how many kids are in the free and reduced lunch programs. And then she's also done some classes at the Juvenile Center as well, right next door to us and, and the Family Service Center. And then also reaching out with minority groups in the, in the county, she does work with Cultural Diversity Resources too. In our regional office, we, we still have a big presence there, and, and that's great because then that allows us to, those regional educators to meet with the, the county staff here for extension and help them with their programming. We have a couple new youth development educators, one is focusing on leadership and civic engagement. He came from our Pennington County office. And then we added another, another youth development educator, we hired her away from NDSU Extension, and she has a really strong animal science background, so she'll fit in well here with, with that, that interest in Clay County. We still have our, our shared staff with NDSU Extension, we have a couple guys that work on sugar beets, and then another guy on potatoes and also sheep, and then we also share a nutrition educator with them. And then one of our, we have a food systems educator in our regional office here as well, and she's been doing a lot on local foods issues within Clay County, and she also establishes a lot of partnerships with, with Cass County as well, which is good. A couple other programming things to mention, we, we have the Emerging Leadership Program, which selects a couple from a number of counties in the region each year to go through leadership training that they can then in turn use with, with the service opportunities that they have. And for Clay County this year, the, the couple in that program is Eric and Vanessa Skolmas from Glendon. That program is about to finish up, they, they have their final event in a couple weeks in, on the Crookston campus. And then our annual awards that we select and recognize people in, in the county for their agricultural efforts. One is the Outstanding Farm Leader Award, and that again goes to a couple, that's Greg and Ellen Zilmer. And our other two, we're still selecting, our, our Farm Family of the Year, where can you get that nailed down, and then our County Agriculturalist Award as well, which we work with NDSU on. That's tied into their Harvest Bowl event, where we're still finalizing that selection as well. But if, if, at any point, any year, if, if any one of the, any commissioners on the county board or your constituents have any suggestions on those awards, feel free to, to share that with us, and so we can make sure that the appropriate people get recognized and considered. Lastly, I'll just mention our, kind of our other connections that help us with our programming in the county. We have our County Extension Committee, of course, and we have, that membership has stayed pretty consistent in recent years, but we have one new member this year, Shelley Dahlquist from the City Council. It's been a common practice in Clay County that we've had somebody from the City Council on the committee with us, and that's been helpful. We do, we do programming with the city, namely through 4H, with their summer programming, so it's good to have that connection. And then we also have Commissioner Mojo is on the AMC Extension Committee, which we appreciate her service with that. That's a, that's a great way to, to make sure that the, the views from this county and this region are, are brought forth to that, to that larger group, and that, that helps with a lot of our structuring out, a lot of our county positions. So, that's an important role, which we appreciate her service with that.
You guys do a lot of great things, so it's.
Thank you.
It's amazing, all the, all the good work you and your staff do, so. The board have any questions for Ben?
I just got a comment, you know, when, when you go to the fair at Barstool in summer, I mean, you really know it's the 4H there, I mean, that is, that is a big event there, and do a great job there.
Thank you.
First, I have to say something. 4H fanatic. I do wanna say though, what I really sincerely appreciate is the regional presence in Clay County, and, and when you go to the state, that's not, not every county gets that, and I know you kind of hustle between a couple different offices as well, so thank you for what you do there, but thanks for that regional presence, it really adds an additional benefit, I think, to this area, and, and it's interesting to get this report right after the juvenile report about kids that are really struggling, and, and I really think that the programming that you offer is, is really important for kids' lifelong skills.
Absolutely.
Really does offer some, the broad gamut, anywhere from animal science, there's kids competing in animal science competitions and making STEM, you know, cars out of paper clips or whatever. I mean, so it's, thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Yeah, we definitely know that that investment upfront helps, helps kids in the long run and, and helps local governments as well.
Thanks, Ben, thank your staff for us, we appreciate everything you do, so, thanks, have a good day.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, Jenny, you're gonna take number seven, recommendation to appoint new planning commissioner?
Emma, are you coming up for this one?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if.
I told her you would kinda hang it up.
Great.
Good morning.
Good morning, Emma. So, the Planning Commission recently has had a vacancy, Mr. Tom Jensen from Barnesville's term expired, and I think that having equal representation or varied representation from the broad gamut of the county is important, and so we reached out to area cities to see if they had any interest, and we did get an application from Barnesville. Steve Mortensen applied and was present at the last Planning Commission meeting. He is currently a member on the Barnesville Planning Commission, so because they have their own JPA, I think that would be a, a benefit to have that representation at the Planning Commission. Unfortunately, he works in Wappatin, so he voiced, he was sorry he wasn't able to make this one, but it's, it's tricky with work, so he was unanimously recommended to be appointed to the Planning Commission, and I guess if you have any other questions, Emma or I could stand for those.
We don't wanna make this too easy on Emma, do we?
Was he the only person?
He was, yep.
The board's wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and the second. Any further discussion? Carry none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both ayes and motion carries. Thanks, Emma.
We do have one other piece on this. In recent conversations that we've had about when new members are appointed to different boards, we wanted to kind of give them information to know where, where we've been, or information that might be helpful for them moving forward. So, we are going to be implementing a new member orientation, but also an annual board update to just allow the boards some continuing education and understanding, so that packet was also included.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Emma.
Thanks, Emma.
Okay, Dave, come on up, request approval of amendment, the MinDOT agreement for more joint-use facility. Come on, Dave.
Good morning. This document is a little bit of cleanup work. When we moved into the building in 2002, there was an original agreement that was drafted up, I believe, all three parties, city, state, and county signed it, and then there was a kind of an advisory or a, a leadership group, I guess, that kind of started working on how we're gonna handle billings and invoices and office, you know, procedurals, O and M type procedures, and some of the things that were done sixteen years ago didn't exactly follow the agreement. You know, there were some things that were being billed to all three parties in thirds. There's nothing in the agreement that says anything about thirds, and I think it was just the feeling of the group at that time. Well, we started taking a look at the agreement and realizing that, you know, maybe we should follow the, you know, there's ownership on there, the way it sits up. MinDOT is thirty-three percent owner of the building, county's forty-five, and the city's twenty-two, and essentially, we, we kind of went back to the agreement and stayed that we, somebody's O and M and capital improvement thing should follow the ownership, not really by thirds. So, I, you know, and I think we all agreed that, we talked a little bit about it at Highway Committee. There was some changes with occupancy, and the way that, so what happened is the city gave up a few of the spots in the warm storage to the state because they got their new top plow now. So, the occupancy actually is thirty-eight percent MinDOT, forty-six percent county, and sixteen percent city, and there's a little tidbit that we added in there that kind of follows, you know, some of the janitorial things are maybe based on occupancy more so than ownership. It's a very small percent of the overall costs of operating the building. Essentially, it's some of the paper products and it's the green view cost, so we added that in there so that the, those costs will be billed out according to the occupancy percentage, and then most everything else will be billed out according to the ownership percentage, and I think all three parties agreed that was probably the most fair. We also did add in a couple things that weren't really listed, like the percentage of ownership of the cold storage building, which, you know, that's a tent on the outside of the building. At the time we moved in, the city didn't have funds and or didn't need that building, so that's actually two-thirds county, one-third state. The salt, the salt, or the, the wash rack and the salt shed, that is actually owned thirds by all three parties. Maybe not owned thirds as far as the wash bay, but the city uses the wash bay quite a bit. They've got sanitation, they've got other people that use it, so the group felt that that's probably the only thing that should be billed out, all costs associated with that, which at times can be kind of pricey, there's a lot of equipment out there, and it gets used a lot, it's a little bit of a headache, but, so that is identified in the amendment as thirds, and for the most, and then it kind of identified some different parties, you know, the city now has a new employee that's kind of a, I think he's called a facilities manager, so they listed him in there rather than the existing title of the city's employee that governs this, so. For the most part, we just kind of cleaned up some of the things with the existing agreement. MinDOT's group put this together in the form of an amendment, and also, it identifies the same period of time, I think it was like a twenty-year, thirty-year agreement when we first moved into the building, and it continues to follow that same timeframe, so. All in all, I think it's, was a good, it cleaned up. It's a lot easier for, you know, the highway accountant does all the billings for the building, so less gray areas for her. We just basically had a lot of past practice in billing, so this will clean up some of the irregularities there.
Questions for Dave?
On that salt shed, are we rejoining that thing, or is it?
So, I'm still working with the, the state on that. There is a plan, I believe, in 2024 for replacement of the salt shed.
Well, it's not till 2020.
Yeah, it's quite a ways out, it's something that we're gonna need to continue to talk at Highway Committee, because it's gonna be a capital improvement expenditure. I'm really pushing to get some involvement in that, rather than just saying, here's what we're gonna do, write us a check. I, I think there's some efficiencies that can be done there. There's some, you know, the concrete slab that's there, the concrete walls that are on the salt shed right now. I've heard that some of that stuff is planned to go away, and I don't think that should go away, I think we can save some money. The way the agreement is written, there needs to be a two-thirds majority on any capital improvement, so I think the city and the county, if we don't feel we wanna completely tear it all down and start over, I don't know why we can't find some sort of a hybrid project. I've been in touch with another company that does these exact same buildings, and I'm giving them all the information we have. I plan to get some quotes on what it would cost to do a couple different options. First option would be is to even utilize the existing truss and the metal framework that's there and just replace the cover itself, because those only have a twenty-year life. I don't know if that'll be acceptable by all parties, but I think we should have it on the table. Second option would be to tear down the, the buildings, but leave all the concrete structures there, and just put up a new, a new, just a new cover-all tent type building. And then the third option, I imagine, will come from the state, complete project, and I mean, there were in excess of four hundred thousand dollars for those, you know, and we've got one-third of the salt tent, and we have two-thirds of the cold storage tent, so essentially, the county's on the hook for one whole tent, so.
Yeah.
Trying to save as much as we can.
I think that's a good plan, Dave, you've got some good ideas there, and hopefully we'll save some money in the future if you do that, so Frank, you have?
No, it's fine, thank you.
Anything else for Dave? Okay. What's the?
Make a motion to approve the agreement. The one question I had, though, we did have a legal review on this.
Correct, yep. I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Pretty extensive legal review between both parties, and, yeah, we circled around, there was some case law that was thrown out with regard to these liabilities and things, and I think the legal review was excellent.
Okay, great.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Carry none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both ayes and motion carries. Thanks, Dave. Are you having any luck with your search for a new assistant?
So, there's some applicants that are in there, so I'm gonna print those out today. I've been working a little more on these admin assistant, that one's just a little bit ahead of it for our timeframe. We've got all kinds of applicants there, some are better than others, but between the two, yeah, we're hopefully gonna be, I did speak with Commissioner Campbell and Administrator Larson a little bit with regard to a panel, and I think we've got a, you know, panel in mind when it, when we get ready to do interviews and.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
Okay, committee reports. Jenny?
Thank you. Last week, I attended a PIC committee meeting, just to discuss some HR issues. I also attended MetroCog last week, the executive committee, we talked about the CPG fund status, affirmed that the twenty-two projects and solicitation for the future projects, and we did approve a small amount of dollars to purchase the traffic counting equipment that has kind of worn down throughout the seasons. We did talk about the, we don't specifically have a fund to replenish those, that equipment, and talked about some sort of internal service fund going forward. They do have a couple bank accounts that have dollars in them, but I think when you specifically allocate for equipment purchases, that might be better, so we'll talk about that going forward. And then we did vote to send a, a letter to Senator Kramer's office in Washington DC to talk about transportation.
to talk about transportation legislation in specific areas that the part of Moorehead planning area would like to see. So I do have a copy of that, if you'd like to see that. Other than that, pretty good. And I do see that we have a letter regarding the 12th Avenue Corridor Study Open House on March 19th at Concordia, if you'd like to attend. So MetroCog will be doing that. Then last evening, I did attend the Buffalo Red Watershed District Meeting. I appreciate the fact that we had our representative on the Wild Rice Watershed there as well. That was important and I think good input and representation from community members all around the county. So I think there are some hearings coming up forward, you know, that we will obviously all be attending probably, but important questions that are being asked with the watershed there and will fall in their court going forward. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
Yes, thank you. I have to go back two weeks because I was not here last week to, so back on February 27th, we had a Prairie Lakes Solid Waste Meeting, and I won't go into that because I'm assuming that maybe you might have reported on that, Commissioner Wayland. So in the interest of time, I will do that. The same goes with Wednesday, the 27th. I also came back and attended the, both the Outreach Committee and the Land Management Committee. There was some, obviously some discussion about Woberton, Comstock, Christine, North Dakota, and we did an update on the Minnesota legislation regarding the bill that was introduced to the Senate for bond funds for in-town work in Moorehead. Then that afternoon, that same afternoon, there was also the Land Management Meeting, and I know Commissioner Mojo was there, and I'm assuming she reported on that, so I won't go further into that one as well. Thursday morning, the 28th, I attended the Solid Waste Committee Meeting, and Commissioner Wayland was there, and I'm assuming you gave the report on that, so I won't save time on that one and not add anything else. Then the, in the afternoon, we had, the 28th, we had the Metro Flood Diversion Authority Meeting. Commissioner Wayland also attended that. So again, I won't go into any more of that. On the March 4th, we had a Chairs Coordinating Committee Meeting on the diversion authority. And again, that's a lot of, a lot of discussion was, discussions that led up to, you know, the meeting last night with Barnesville. In addition, you know, we continue to try to reach out to Woberton and Comstock. You know, we've been communicating with the Minnesota DNR whenever we can on this project. And, you know, we discussed then litigation matters that are going on still in the federal court system. Then it's, also on Tuesday, the 5th, then, I did, I was not at this meeting because I was presenting to both the Becker County and Otter Tail County Boards, giving them an update on the diversion project. And along with myself was our diversion authority chair, Mary Scherling, and our two staff people was, that work through A2S, Eric Dodds and Rocky Schneider, were present to give PowerPoint presentations. Those meetings went very well. They were well received. We started off in the morning at Becker County, and there was, you know, we talked about the project itself and where it is today, and we talked about the contested case hearing, of which they certainly came out with a consensus that the contested case hearing was not the way that we should be going on regarding this project. And I believe that they followed up with a letter to their Becker County appointee to that fact last week. In the afternoon, we went to the Otter Tail County Board, and they happened to be meeting that day in Purim. They took their county board on the road to Purim for a day of different things, so we were on the agenda for that afternoon. We gave the same update there. There was an awful lot of dialogue and an awful lot of questions regarding the project. And I have to say that both of those counties certainly understand the need for the project and its importance from an economic standpoint for our region. They made that perfectly clear, every one of them. By the time we were done with our presentation in Otter Tail County, they, you know, they asked what we could do, what they could do to help us. And again, we talked about the contested case, and their representative, appointed representative in the last go-around with the contested case was one who had voted not to contest. And their board actually made a motion to send him a letter saying they agreed with his position not to contest that. And they did verbally mention that the need for this project, and they were supportive of the project. So that was, that was, that was really a good day for, for that project, meeting with those folks. On Thursday, March 7th, we had our Clay County Joint Powers Committee Meeting, and that was the first one that we had since the intergovernmental retreat, because the previous, the February meeting had to be canceled due to the weather that was going on. It seems to me that's a constant. And we had a, we had a presentation on workforce and diversity in the workforce, and that was, that was, that was really an interesting presentation. I think that's, there's going to be more discussion on that moving forward. I think we're going to have, have those folks back again to talk more. And it kind of fits in with concerns that we have, you know, as growing counties with the lack of workforce. So that, it was really a good meeting. And then we did, we did review the intergovernmental retreat. Snare's, I did, and everything was, the facility, we've got high marks, and they've, they made a point of booking it again right away for next year. And the same with the Swedish meatballs, I think, Jim saw your.
There was a suggestion that we have healthier food next year.
As healthy as you can get there. Jim kind of put the, put the word in for Swedish meatballs, and so that's, I think that'll be on the agenda, so. And then yesterday, the 11th, in the morning, we did have, we had another Chairs Coordinating Meeting regarding the executive group for the diversion. And we talked about several items, including last night's meeting with the Buffalo Red. There's some reaching out that's going on with Horace and Christine in North Dakota. And we discussed, there is going to be a special meeting of the diversion authority on March 19th, and that's scheduled for 1:00. The one for this Thursday has been canceled. And that meeting on the 19th, it's my understanding that we're going to have Senator Hoben is going to be here, and possibly Governor Burgum, and there's been an invitation to Governor Walz of Minnesota. And the primary purpose for that will be the signing of the First Amendment of the Project Partnership Agreement. And that, the reason that it needs to be done is because the Corps has come out and increased their financial share from $450 million to $750 million. And that required an amendment from the Project Partnership Agreement, of which I understand yesterday, both the city and the city passed motions to sign that 100%. So it was unanimous on both boards to move forward with that. So there will be a meeting to discuss that, and then I believe there will be some photo ops and things. That day, Commissioner Wayland, I have, I had already promised that I would be in Fergus Falls in the morning for the Lakes Country. They're looking at a building, and so I'm part of the building committee. I'm still going to try to be back by the 1:00 meeting. I do believe that they might be having something from 11:30 to 1:00. You know, so you would take my place at that?
Yeah.
So, yeah, so. And then last night, of course, I attended the Buffalo Red River Watershed Meeting, and I'll leave it at that.
That's it? That's all you have? That's all I have. How about the housing project?
Oh, yes, 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 I'm sorry. Yeah, so, and this goes back to quite some time ago. Commissioner Mojo, last year, when you were Board Chair, we were presented a housing project, a potential housing project that happened to be in my district. And it was presented by Commonwealth Development, and they were looking at, you know, some affordable housing opportunities. There's no homeless shelter, but an affordable deal where, where, you know, it's, it would be privately constructed and funded, but it would be eligible for some of our cases through the county.
It was a daycare outside.
Well, yeah, unfortunately, this one, right, they've switched locations now, and instead of going from a townhouse style, they were, they've been looking at a three-story facility. And so we had our first meeting with them. There was a lot of questions raised, and, you know, so there will be continued discussion on that. They needed to have, or they, they're requesting, it's a, it would be a 46-unit building, and they would be looking at wanting Clay County to basically say that they, 10 of those units would qualify for these funds for low-income housing that comes out of the federal government, the state government. There's no local money involved, but it's, but it's passed through dollars. So, you know, so that process will continue. I believe that group gave a presentation, or was going to give a presentation to the City Council last night on that project. So that's, yeah, thank you for reminding me, but that was, that was kind of a lengthy meeting, and there was a lot of people in attendance at that one, so. And then we did talk about, you know, on something like this, you know, reaching out to the neighborhood, you know, so that there can be some, you know, better understanding of what's going on. So I, you know, I think there's a commitment on everybody's part to see that done, so.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Last Tuesday, went to the fire station, and they gave a presentation of the 11th Street underpass. Sounded to me like it's in the budget somewhere, I don't know, where the money's going, when the money's going to be coming, but it sounded pretty, they sounded pretty confident.
Governor's.
Budget, so. Wednesday, I went to Ada to the One Watershed One Plan, to start off meeting for that. And they're, they go for Houston Engineers to do the project. Matt Jacobson, who's doing it for the Buffalo, will be also doing it for the Wild Rice. So they're just in the planning stages, they're getting their, their goals, what their goals are going to be, the committee bylaws and stuff like that. So that was just in the initial stage, and the timeline was put out as far as when they plan on being done with that. Friday, went to Barnesville, did the Partnership for Health Board Meeting. There, Josh, Eberts gave a good presentation on our emergency preparedness code red, where people can call in and if they have different needs and stuff like that, they get in that code red, things like that. He gave a good presentation on how that's going. Pat Hollister from Green Corp's gave a presentation on all the stuff that they're doing with bike paths and trails and stuff like that. And there's an update on the public health assessment. They're going to do a public health assessment of the four counties and stuff, which is just starting out. Yesterday, Minnesota Rural Counties made an ITV meeting on that. They discussed pretty much, you know, Enbridge gave a presentation there, and the other presence, you know, what their presence means to the state of Minnesota. I mean, they're looking at 2.6 billion investment in Minnesota, you know, and they thought that they're taking, bringing in about 35 million additional tax revenues to the state. So they were sort of presenting their case as far as what Enbridge Pipeline, what that pipeline will do for the state of Minnesota. And 98% of the landowners have signed agreements, but they still have a couple more to sign there. They're expected to complete that thing by the summer of 2020. They're looking at assessors, some of the other things that they're looking at, the assessors on this buffer program, they're looking at the assessors reevaluating that property that is being put into the buffer program, and they're looking, who's going to pay for the assessors, trying to do all that, because there's going to be a lot of property to reassess on that. And they spoke on some of the other projects they're working on, like broadband, that is trying to get going. Yes, those are the ones I have.
Thank you. Kim?
Thank you. Tuesday, I attended the meeting at the firehouse following our meeting, along with Commissioner Gross. And we heard the presentation from the Minnesota Department of Transportation Commissioner Margaret Anderson-Kellyher. And she indicated that this was a very high priority for Governor Walz for the state of Minnesota, which was welcome news to everyone present. Then on Wednesday, the 6th, I attended the City of Moorehead Planning Commission Meeting, and we okayed permits for a change in the right-of-ways for the utilities, granting access to the development or the expansion of the Eventide facility down in South Moorehead. And we also permitted the development in the extreme northwest portion of Oakport Township, where there's a new development going to go in of large lots. I think they average two acres or acre and a half, something like that, with two big three-acre pieces there. And we okayed them to have, for this development to go forward, along with the idea of keeping the pastoral aspects of Oakport Township, in that we did not require them to have sidewalk and gutters, and they can have dishes instead. And so that went forward. And then on, I had one more. Well, I attended the joint powers that Commissioner Campbell talked about on Friday, on Thursday. And then last night, I attended the Buffalo Red River Watershed District Meeting. That's my report.
Thank you. I also attended Buffalo Red. I think we've heard plenty about that. I think Jenny mentioned we had a PIC meeting on some issues last week. Also, I was at the housing meeting with Kevin on the housing project, and I think that's going to be a, that sounds really good. I mean, there's a lot of potential there. At Commonwealth Development, I know the city manager from Warren was at the meeting, and she said at a League of Cities thing, they, everybody just raved about this Commonwealth Development, and then how you wanted them in your community. So I think that's good, that there looks like they're going to have a project here, and it sounds like there'll probably be more if this works out for them. I had the MRC meeting also. Frank already discussed that. There's a lot of support for that Enbridge Pipeline, at least from the rural, rural counties. And, you know, they're, they're concerned, you know, about the opposition to that, and, you know, they, they all discussed the safety issues in the counties that it's going to be, you know, where it already exists, but they want to replace it, and the economic impacts for those counties. So they're all concerned about that, and hopefully that will work itself out. That's, yeah, I think that's it for me. Darren, oh, Kevin, you got some?
Commissioner Wayland, did you, when you gave the report on the diversion authority meeting, did you touch on the Fredrickson contact? Maybe I should just update.
I don't remember.
So, okay, so at the diversion authority meeting, did you touch on the Frederickson
So, okay, so at the diversion meeting, there was, there was some question whether or not we should enter into an agreement with Fredrickson Byron Law Firm for Government Relation Services, dealing with, you know, our financial request for the diversion project with the state legislature in Minnesota. And we managed to get it on the agenda. Those of us who are on this side of the river, who are on the diversion authorities, felt strongly that we need to have that advocacy in St. Paul. And so the diversion authority did agree to a two-year, $36,000 a year contract with Fredrickson, and their key contact would be, will be Kevin Goodno. Probably those of you who remember Kevin, he was, he's from Moorhead and was on the Moorhead City Council and the state legislature, representing Moorhead. So we felt very important, and the diversion authority did unanimously support funding that project on our behalf, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a question. Do we have the Small Cities meeting on the calendar yet?
Yes.
Okay, what's the date?
The city-county meeting, we have for April 22nd.
Okay, thank you.
Four to six.
Thank you.
April 22nd?
Yes. Four to six, probably in the Hit It All Community Center? Did you ever hear back?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, Darren, anything?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple things. As you know, the county administrator's out on vacation. He'll be back next Tuesday. I was out for an unfortunate medical issue on Monday and Tuesday last week, but Wednesday, I attended the Personnel Issues Committee as well, to talk over some personnel issues. That afternoon, myself, the county administrator, the Planning and Zoning Director, and the assessor had another meeting to discuss some stuff that was going on down there. On Thursday, we had the managers' meeting, started off with a training session. We heard some input from the STRIVE Committee that they've been working on, and had some ideas for the EAC. I gave an update on the market study, and we do have a presentation to the Personnel Issues Committee and the Board on March 26th by David Drow and Associates. They're the ones that are gonna be doing our markets, market study. And then they're gonna also present to the managers on April 4th at the next managers' meeting, just to kind of give you an update on that. That's the initial meeting for them. Went through a little bit of the legal services update between the city and the county that's been ongoing at the managers' meeting. And we also discussed some of the agendas for the managers' retreat, which is currently scheduled for April 23rd, and we're gonna have that over at the Law Enforcement Center at this point. And then after the managers' meeting, we met with Public Health, Building Maintenance, Highway Sheriff Department on the flood outlook for the March and April timeframe. And then we got a little bit of a presentation with some of the predictions that they're looking at for the next month or two. And then I had a meeting on, with Planning and Zoning Director and their staff on Friday, and some discussions more with David Drow and Associates last week on the initial meeting with the wage study, and also some discussions with AMC, Heather Bandine, about the facilitation for the April's managers off-site, and then the city-county meeting on April 22nd. That's all I have.
We got the meeting on Monday, don't you mean? I mean, it's on the schedule.
Yes, that's on the agenda, actually.
I would encourage a lot of the staff to be there for, you know...
Yep, and actually, county administrator put out an email to the staff to see if as many could be there as possible.
Where's, that's Monday at?
That's Monday, March 19th, at 8:30.
Is the planning commission planning on?
No, there will not be a planning commission meeting. They don't have any applications this month.
You know, I was just wondering, as far as, you said they want to give a present, are they gonna give a presentation at that meeting at all, as far as what their involvement is in the county?
On Monday.
And you said something about the planning commission doing it.
Right, we're gonna have a new member orientation for planning commission members. So this, it's not gonna be, there's, maybe in the fall meeting, we'll do that.
Okay. I was gonna see if they had a role, you know, what their role is in the county and stuff like that.
Okay, I could maybe talk to it during my report there.
Kevin? Yeah, I just wanna, and I'm glad that I heard Darren bring up some information regarding discussions about potential flooding. I think it would be good for us to, maybe next week, ask Gabe to come in, because we have somebody totally new involved with that, just to see what, what's going on and what preparations are being made in the event that we do have something. Because we oftentimes, if it's not the Red River, it might be the Buffalo River, that might still have some flooding issues, and just to see what's in the process there.
Darren, you want to see that we get a, get that plan for next week?
Yep, I can do that.
Okay. Tony, anything?
Nope.
Colleen, anything else for us?
Yes.
We're adjourned.